...in this board, clarity and justice for all.
Okay, so the first announcement is that if you're here for Paragon Motors, the site plan, they've been postponed, so they're not being heard tonight, and I'm being told that they'll be postponed until January 24th. So, I'll make that announcement again if I see more people coming in at a later time, but that's it. So, moving on, the first item up is U.S. Information Systems, P B number seventeen dash fifty-one, they're here for final. Could you please sign in, state your name for the record, and your affiliation with the project?
Jessica Ogunna, owner.
See, you know what USIS is?
Diego Villarreal, JMC, civil engineering firm.
So, Diego Villarreal.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, we're here tonight for final site plan approval. Since we came to this board last, we did go receive our variances from the zoning board of the fields. We also met with the architectural review board around the board and received approval for-
The plan with no modifications. The variances that were received was for the setbacks. We did encroach into the various setbacks that surround the property as well as building height. We also did receive a variance for lowering the total number of loading berths on the property before the break. We also did, and I'll quickly take you through the site plan, make a number of modifications to the site plan, most of which came at the request of this board. The first one was we combined the two driveways that were off of the Ramland Road roundabout. There was originally proposed two driveways, they were combined into one, and we eliminated one access point off of that driveway. The building proposal is still the same, twenty-two thousand square foot building on the southern end of the property. We did make some modifications to the turning radii around the northeast corner. If you remember, there were some concerns about the ability to back into that loading space. We made modifications to that curved island around the perimeter of the property to allow for easier access into that loading space. We also relooked at our stormwater management system, that was a specific request of this board as well. We originally proposed an underground retention system in the parking lot, that's been eliminated, and we have an open pond or an open water retention system along the frontage of the property where the roof drainage from the building, the new portion of the building, as well as the new parking areas will drain to this pocket pond along the frontage of the property, get treated, and ultimately discharged. We've eliminated all of the underground retention systems. Again, that's the extent of the modifications that were made to the plan, the parking remains the same, circulation throughout the property remains the same, but we did go get our various approvals from the other boards in the municipality.
Good, thank you. Cheryl, is, all I have is this letter from Jane. Everything else is read into the record?
No, they put this in the package.
I have the package right here, okay? And then it says... So, this, all this October 20th stuff, none of it's all new? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've got one additional modification. There was a trash enclosure that was discussed with this board as well, that was added to the northwest corner of the property closest to the overhead door, it's located on the building.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, if you're, raise your hand if you're here for this, please? If you're here to hear this, anybody? Okay. I'm gonna say this, and I'll tell you again after we read everybody else's, but I generally don't read all of the details of the memos, but they are available to everybody in the back, so that's what I typically do. The PRC has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted by other agencies for this project. From the Office of Building, Zoning, and Planning Administration Enforcement, Town of Orange Town, Jane Slaven, she has two comments, excuse me, one comment. The PRC has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted. From Bruce Peters, from the Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, he has seventeen. Yo, well, he has seventeen. I don't care if you have any problems with him. Highway Department? None. Environmental Health, you have to do the mosquito code. There's the decision from the ZBA. There's the decision from Akebor. And then there's Brooker. I have it, thanks. Basically, it says, "The applicant has provided sufficient information to demonstrate that the proposed project can provide a zero net increase in peak stormwater runoff rates and can mitigate potential significant adverse impacts with respect to stormwater. We therefore recommend that the USIS warehouse expansion site plan be approved for drainage subject to the above project comments," and there are fourteen. That's all I have, Cheryl. Mr. Young.
I'm sure I asked this question before, the twenty-eight foot on the expansion, that's flush with the current height of the building?
With the existing building?
The existing.
No, it is not, it's higher than the existing building.
How many feet higher?
I don't know the exact amount, but it is higher than the existing, though. I don't know the footage of the existing building.
Okay, that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Dell?
Yes, for the record, I was not here during the preliminary, but from what I can see, it looks like a good job has been done. Other than that, I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Mr. Bond?
What are the hours of operation of the facility?
Seven to six, seven a.m.
Five days a week?
Five days a week. The weekends are exceptions, and two are the internals.
Great, thank you.
The office and staff, sometimes from the Saturday.
Is that it, Mr. Bond?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Mr. Warren?
I think you've done a nice job. We had a lot of questions that I think you pretty much answered already, so I'm very happy with it. Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney?
Same, I appreciate you taking all of our comments into account.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Mandell?
Just a couple of quick questions. What was the final area of disturbance? Is it less than the acre?
No, it exceeds one acre. It is... I'll check the number, but I believe it's about 1.3.
Okay, that was one of the questions that they had. The monitoring wells, are they being closed up?
The monitoring wells on the property?
Yeah.
Within the area of the building and anything that's encompassing that area, yes would be removed.
Okay, that's the D E C approval?
With these, yes, anything that would be done would have to be-
Right, will that reduce the number of fans, or...
What's that?
Will that reduce the number of fans that were in use?
No, they're just saying, they're independent of that.
Okay, still the same number, okay. On the east, on the east side of the building, where you have parking along the building itself, you also have parking along the buffer area of about, gotta be about twenty-five vehicles? Is that gonna be continued, or is, because it looks like that the dirt was pushed back and vehicles are being parked there? They'd be on the east side, opposite the residential properties?
The edge of the pavement is not being modified. That edge of pavement stays exactly the same, here.
Well, they're up onto the, they're matched up on there.
Oh, beyond the pavement?
Yeah, well, you can see that the dirt has been pushed-
You can see that the dirt was pushed back up in spots, and you have vehicles going, if that was the pavement, it would be level, and these vehicles are not level. So, I think it should be a condition that all parking along that side be removed.
Be removed, or be put onto the asphalt areas so that they're not extended-
Well, if you put it on the asphalt area, I don't know if you have enough room. If you're gonna add spots there, would that be another twenty spots you'd be adding?
It would be the same as it is right now, you're just asking for them to pull further away from the buffer so that they're on the pavement and not extending onto the grass line.
Well, I don't see anything on the plans that's-
It's unstriped.
So, this, it is, that should be on the plans, I think.
Okay.
The number of spots, and they should be pulled back onto the pavement, and some sort of curbing there preventing it from going up onto the-
Just an asphalt curb or something along that?
Or a concrete curb or something, that they're not pulling up onto the buffer area.
We may be creating a knee wall there so that they have a stop area, so they can stop, and also so that the cars will be facing into the building, that obviously not the other way, because that's where it's located.
Which is required.
Either way, we'll have a knee wall that three or four feet high, so that either way they would not be able to see.
Okay, so those, that'd be additional parking, so you're coming up to about eighty parking spots, I would imagine, then?
Say that again.
You'd probably be around eighty parking spots. If you have twenty-two on the east side now, you'd have probably twenty-two opposite it?
Correct, and some of it would be unstriped, yes.
Okay, so, are these spots gonna be striped?
They can be.
Well, it should be included on the, on the, on the plans, the number of parking spots, and that knee wall, there should be a requirement in the, in the final conditions, Mr. Chairman? Do you have no objection?
If the rest of the board doesn't have any objection, and the applicant doesn't, I don't-
No, it's a recommendation that I'm making, it's up to the board as a whole. Okay, thank you, it's a great project, doesn't matter, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this applicant? Come on up, please. Come up to the microphone, please, and state your name and your address for the record, and just so everybody knows, we give you a three-minute timeframe.
Bob Gorgleone, 142 Valley Forge Place, Orangeburg. Yeah, I live directly behind that existing building, and this weekend was pretty active there, I don't know how you could say that, maybe you ought to come over and spend the weekend over there, because there was more, more traffic there than you can imagine on, on, on this weekend. Plus, the noise is constant there now, I don't know what it's gonna be like with addition of that building. That building was put on that footprint for, for a reason when it was built, and now all the boundaries are gone now, and if they want to expand, there's plenty of other expansions in that part of the office building that doesn't border private houses. It's absolutely ridiculous that they wouldn't think of putting it there, and if you drive by there, you can see the amount of cars in that parking lot, or what goes on there. Between backup alarms, deliveries, whose alarms going off, the clown with the hot rod that starts up every day and races down that road at ninety miles an hour, every day, back and forth, that works for you. It doesn't belong there. It doesn't belong there, and they need another buffer now, even before that building, on the east side of that building where the houses are. Even if they don't put that building up, they need a buffer there. It's absolutely ridiculous that you would conceive expanding that building there with those residents there. They got a huge office park there, huge, that doesn't obstruct any residences at all, and you're putting that stuff right on Valley Forge and that whole area there. It's absolutely ridiculous, you ought to be ashamed of yourself for even considering it. If you lived there, you wouldn't think they're doing such a great job that you said they're all doing. They're not doing such a great job, because I lived there, and I deal with it every day, every day. So, don't tell me that their plan is great until you want to spend a couple days there. And are they gonna give me a rebate on my taxes in this town when my property value drops? Because I can't afford it right now. So, if the house is sold at a low price, I think my property taxes should diminish also, because they're throwing my property value right out the window, and everybody else on that west, that east side there. It's absolutely ridiculous. That building was put there back in the day on that footprint for a reason. These companies all do what they want, Subaru. Go spend some time there, you can see the parking lots jammed up now. It's absolutely ridiculous that you would even conceive expanding that building with those people there. These people pay a lot of taxes in this town.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to this?
Steve Del Savio, 262 Trenton Place, Orangeburg. I have the same issue with this project as all the projects that have gone on, on Ramland Road and Corporate Drive, they're all in L I O districts, and they're all warehouses, and to this day, I haven't been told how all these warehouses are getting approved. We've now got, I'm guessing, almost seventy-five loading docks back there, or more. Tractor trailers all over the place. It's not, I mean, nobody at the plant, how does this even get past the building department, is what I'd like to know, when it's not even zoned for that district, any one of these projects, any one of them. They were nice corporate parks when we moved in thirty-five years ago, I checked the code, buildings weren't gonna be more than twenty-five feet high, if they were gonna put a loading dock in, it would be enclosed. Instead, we have Cresstron with twenty outdoor loading docks, sixty feet high, or whatever. Subaru just approved. It's just out of control, out of control, all these projects. I'm questioning, again, on the table, nobody still has shown me special permits, I mean, I got something that Subaru made, applications for a little work within their building, and that justifies what they're doing there now. But back to this project, the last zoning board meeting, the owner even admitted, he goes, "Well, it's basically seven a.m. to maybe six p.m., but, you know, we have work in the city, a lot of work in the city, and we like to come in sometimes at four-thirty to open up and get the trucks out, so they could beat the traffic into the city." I own a business in the city, too, a construction company, and I want to know if I come up here, I want to park my twenty trucks back there, so that I have a cheaper rent, cheaper real estate. Do you know what I pay in the city for rent and taxes for my property where I keep my trucks, not to disturb the residents? This is supposed to be an office park. I have a picture of the last zoning board meeting, I went after the last, the same date, it's in my phone, I'll show you the date, went there, eight-thirty, loading and unloading, eight-thirty at night, okay? That place runs seven days a week, trucks coming in and out of there all the time, big trucks, not fans, trucks, and it's just not supposed to be there. We've lost control of our town. Tractor trailers all up and down Orangeburg Road into Blaisdell, it's getting dangerous, actually. Trucks making that little turnaround, Blaisdell going over the double yellow, you'll hear it, you'll see it one day when the tractor trailer takes out a family on, on Blaisdell Road. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to this? I see none, and I hear none, I need a motion to close the public portion. Sorry, Jane, go ahead.
There was discussion about the possibility of a retaining wall from that parking lot area?
Yeah.
That would definitely have to, at minimum, go to the architectural review board, if you haven't seen anything related to it.
Understood, it's not proposed by this plan, Mr. Chairman, if it's something that we could evaluate, and if we do end up proposing a retaining wall, we will absolutely go back to the architectural review board, but I think we could accomplish those goals by some type of curbing along that backside, but we will look at it, and if we have-
Well, at a minimum, you have to put the curbing in.
Absolutely, but we will look at it if we have to go back.
Are you all ready, Dell?
I'd like to see the wall.
Well, then, they're gonna have to come back, I mean, I'm not, you know, at this point, I'm just gonna tell them that they have to-
Go back to the architectural review, is what I understood.
No, if you're gonna see the retaining wall, you have to come back to us.
Okay, at this point-
And you should show that parking on the map, also.
So, my suggestion is get a, so that we should tell them to get a continuance and come back.
And we need to firm up-
Well, it's not too late.
We also need to firm up the hours of operation of this place.
He was asking me, we could have a decision tonight, I said we might, we have-
You're gonna have to ask a continuance, it doesn't look like you're gonna get what you want. What's that?
We need to firm up what, what the hours of operation exactly are.
Yeah.
And the site plan was showing all the parking spots, that retaining wall, and making plantings, the board wants to go along that retaining wall between the residential properties that you can see on the back of the property to the building itself.
If I could address that real quick, just, there was a concern about the buffer along the back portion of the property, that buffer has remained untouched. We are not extending the pavement any closer to the residential properties that it puts out there right now. The building that's proposed is in line with the existing building in the eastern portion of the property, we're not extending any closer. The retaining wall discussion, I understand that, but I believe the concern was cars backing up beyond the limit of the pavement. That can be accomplished through the use of curbs or bumper blocks, doesn't necessarily need a retaining wall, the retaining wall will not serve as a visual barrier in any way. If the concern is keeping cars on the paved areas, that can be accomplished through curbing or bumper blocks, and that's what I would like to propose this evening. If Mr. Ogunna wants to come back for a retaining wall back there, I think we can do that and come back with a separate argument.
Why, then why is there a discrepancy between what your neighbors are saying and what you guys are saying? Hours of operation? I don't know who you are, and I don't know why you're standing up, so if you are, you are part of this application? Then sit down, state your name for the record, sign in, and let the, and let them know.
My name's Laura Wyeth, I'm counsel for the applicant. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry I didn't sign in earlier, I didn't know it would be necessary, but I can answer those questions so that you know. Because that came up, we tracked the truck traffic between the twenty-first of September and today, so that you would know exactly what the hours were of the truck traffic, which is what I think the issue is. The truck traffic, but for one day, there was one truck on one day that was there before seven o'clock, it was ten minutes of seven. Other than that, there was, there were no trucks before seven, seldom trucks before eight, and never a truck after three-thirty in the afternoon, and that's tracking it from September twenty-first through today.
That's truck arriving, or the part-
That's truck arrival and departure, that's when trucks are there. I mean, we, we-
There's a delivery.
There were delivery trucks, there was concern about truck traffic the last time we were here, and we figured we would get ahead of it and try to let you know exactly what was going on, so we had a truck, we had a truck every single day, and that's what we found.
Sir, I've closed the public portion to this, and I've asked three times if anybody wanted to speak, so I don't know if you, did you walk in late? Did you not hear what I said?
I did.
Okay, so, I'm gonna need a motion to open up the public portion, because this gentleman was not heard.
I'll second it.
Mr. Mandell opens it up, Mr. Bond seconds, all in favor, sir? All in favor, aye. Sir, you can come up to the mic and you can state, you can-
Set your name and address.
Set your name and your address, and then I'll give you three minutes, like I've done for everybody else.
My name's Pat Murray.
The address is-
You have to speak into the microphone.
M C I L M U R R A Y, 138 Penn Court, Orangeburg, New York.
Go ahead, sir.
I live very close to Mr. Gorgleone, who made statements earlier, maybe I'm a hundred feet further away from the USIS building, I don't know, this is contemporary. How do you track what time the, the building, the trucks come in and out? Do you have a camera there, or?
Okay, sir, you're-
I hear this, I hear stuff-
You're addressing the chairman, you're not asking a question.
You just adjusted the board, not the applicant.
Okay, all right. So, my, my notice is that I went down to that site after they made the adjustments to the embankment, where the trucks are gonna come around and have a wider turn. They're gonna need a retainer wall, at the very least. There's erosion on the side of that hill, and a man that lives, maybe the buffer is up at the top of the hill, the lights come right into his house, that's not an issue anymore, but they just carved part of the embankment out to make the trucks go around, and I beg to differ with the hours they keep, they, they, they work on weekends, and they come in, start early, sometimes five o'clock in the morning, you can hear the prefabricated steel banging in, on the truck beds. Five o'clock in the morning, and they're there, sometimes they're late at night, and they have, it, it looks like a small city back there with all the trucks, mobile lights, and AT&amp;T cable setup. It's, it's, it's not a nine-to-five operation, as they, they said it was going to be, and they work whenever they feel like, it sounds like. And at four-thirty in the morning, you take notice of steel tumbling into a dumpster or into a truck bed. That's all I have to say for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one more time, is there anybody else that wishes to speak to this application? I see none, and I hear none, I need a motion to close. Mr. Mandell makes the motion, Mr. Bond seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, I think that at the very least, you're gonna have to come back and talk to us about having that thing striped, right?
And what's the deal with that, the turn that you cut in for the trucks, was that-
Which one, in the side here?
On the side.
It was not, nothing was cut in, what's shown on the plan is this, you can see this curved island extended further out, so what we proposed and did was bring the curved island further in, it didn't affect the embankment in any way.
Okay. Understood.
As long as it's a concrete barrier, so I can't back over or ride over-
Yeah, I think that at the very least, they should have the barrier put down and the striping.
The barrier should be concrete, not a pad.
Okay, so like, yeah, concrete curb, but if they do that, then they don't have to come back. I mean, we can put the, we can put the, the striping on, as a condition, as the final plan, right? The only thing I could say to the neighbors is that if, if they, they have stated for the record that their hours of operation are from, say it again? Seven to six. And if they are outside that, then you're going to have to call the Buildings Department and make a complaint. We are not an enforcement board, I mean, that's just really the way it is, we have no authority to go, and, you know, we're here to approve or disapprove. So, that's the, that's what my, my suggestion to you is, I can't tell them that they're not telling the truth, and I can't tell you that you're not telling the truth, we have no idea, you know, I mean, we can go out there ourselves, and if we see it, then we can make a complaint to the, to the, to the Buildings Department just as well as you can, so, it might not sound-
You're not gonna make that a condition?
I am, yeah.
No, I'm saying, but-
The hours, the hours of operation are going to be from seven to six, that's what they said, and that's what we all agreed to, is that correct?
Five days a week.
Five days a week.
And what, what, what's your, what's, what about the week, or do you, you said you operate on the weekend occasionally, never, what?
There are no deliveries on the weekend, you know, the weekend's internal people work there.
Well, I can't tell you, you can't operate a business on the weekend, as long as you're telling me that there's not gonna be any deliveries, then I say, okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Deliveries and shipments?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I was, okay, sorry, if we're gonna nitpick, yes, deliveries and shipments, yes, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Okay, so, then I think that you don't have to ask for a continuance, we're gonna give it to you. I mean, we're gonna vote on it, don't wanna get ahead of myself. Okay, so, at this point, I think that we're all done with the comments, everybody?
Yep.
Okay, so, I think I need a motion for final, with conditions.
Motion for final with conditions.
Mr. Mandell makes a motion with, for final with conditions. Jane's one. Bruce Peters, seventeen. Health, one. The zoning board and ZBA?
Decision.
Decisions, and, God, it's like, have them have laid next to me. And, and Brooker's fourteen. Also, that the final plans will show the striping for the parking lot, that the parking lot that they do stripe will have a concrete buffer going, a concrete curb going up to the buffer, and that we make the conditions of the hour of operations from seven a.m. to six p.m., Monday through Friday, with no deliveries or shipments on the weekends. Is my attorney okay with that? The Building Department okay with that? The board is okay with that?
Yep.
I need a second. Mr. Young seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So, the next item up is Henry Kaufman Campground, number PB dash seventeen dash fifty-eight and fifty-nine, they're here for an amendment to the dated PB, not decision, but the last meeting, I guess, July twenty-four, two thousand and thirteen, and then they're here for site and seeker review. What's that? What's that? Well, I don't know if they need drainage, are they proposing anything? Mr. Brenner, you have no drainage.
No, uh, the second part, if we do. First of all, we don't need drainage.
I'm being told you don't have drainage.
We don't have drainage.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, he's definitely gonna ask you.
You know, how, how do I feel about that, Mr. Brenner?
Well, we're here for the first one.
How do I feel about it? You know how I feel about it. You know what I did the last time somebody came here and didn't have drainage on the site, right?
Yes.
Okay. So-
Gentlemen's name on the memo.
Troy Wojtkowski.
W O J C I D K O F N R S K Y.
What do you want, I mean, I just wanna kick him out, tell him to come back.
Let's, let's hear the first one.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I'll make the announcement later. Okay. I know. All right. All right, so, uh, okay, what is that?
Site plan has a, 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 not approved.
Not approved. Okay, so, uh, state your names or your affiliation with the project for the record, and, uh, Mr. Brenner, I'm sure you'll be telling us what's going on, so please do.
Jay Greenwell, last of their.
Donald Brenner, attorney for the applicant.
Troy Wojtkowski, Stantec civil engineer.
Okay, Mr. Brenner.
Okay. Uh, the campground started operation back in 1955. Uh, it has been a well-used camp during the summer months. Uh, it has a large acreage in North Shaw, New York. Uh, in the year 2013, which you so mentioned before, a master plan was presented to the board showing what kind of improvements that the owner had in mind for the camp. The camp was, is an older camp, and they were gonna put improvements into it. Uh, at that point, uh, it was delayed, they didn't have funding for it, they now have their funding, and they have, um, improvised and changed some of the master plan. So we are here as the first application to show you the changes in the master plan. Once the master plan is finished, they are going to develop the camp or rehabilitate the camp in four different sections. The first section is the application you have before you, which you claim we don't have drainage approval for, and I cannot, I don't know about it, therefore, we will definitely ask for an extension on the second project, but we would like to talk about the first one. You wanna, wanna explain it to Troy?
Sure.
I don't know, but you do the best you can.
Okay, I can do that. Sure. Uh, the presentation plan, uh-
You know what, may, maybe it would probably be better if you push it back a little, and then the folks that are here to look at it can get a, at least a better idea-
Sure.
-of what we're talking about. We, we have the drawings, am I right about that? Kidets, no?
Not these ones.
Not these. Why is that, Mr. Brenner?
We have them in black and white, we have them with four or five different, you, you have all the information, but it's on four or five different drawings at project review, it was requested it be consolidated into one set of drawings, and with an explanation to the board as to what took place. So therefore, what the engineer's gonna show you is the consolidation of the drawings that you have before you.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. So this, this presentation drawing here is the same as the drawings that we submitted formally. What we did, we blew up the scale for the presentation, and we also color-coded it for clarity. Um, as you can see from the plan, uh, the green color represents basically replacement, uh, work that we have proposed. As Mr. Brenner had stated, um, really the bulk of the improvements here are simply improvements, not expansions. Um, for example, these green units here, we call home base pavilions. Um, I have another plan here, which I'll show the, the audience as well. This is typically the existing, basically shelter pavilion on, on the campground now. This is the proposed replacement home base structure. It's basically an open pavilion, uh, with the exception of bathrooms and changing rooms in the center of it. So you can see really from an architectural standpoint, and just from a functional standpoint, uh, it's a nice improvement to what's there. Um, so that's the bulk of, uh, the work, uh, proposed here. Other improvements include, uh, two additional pool areas, this is known as the 12 Trails portion of the camp. We have an aquatic center here that has two pools, and a small building for lifeguard restrooms. Other improvements include formalizing some of the open lawn areas into more formal fields, soccer fields, uh, baseball fields, things like that. Um, improving some of the existing basketball courts, um, with some additional, um, courts. Um, over here in, in this section, which is on the north, um, west side of the Brook, is the Bronx House portion of the camp. And as, uh, Mr. Brenner stated, that's our second application, is for the site plan approval for that portion. In that area, we have two of those home bases to be replaced, as you can see with the green. The red is a new pool area. And, uh, again, formalizing an existing field into a more formal soccer field, but we do also propose a brand-new baseball field in a currently wooded area. Um, so you can see kind of a, a mix on this color-coded plan of a lot of upgrades to existing facilities, some new buildings, some new playfields, uh, things like that. Uh, from an engineering standpoint, um, the Bronx House, part of the project, is served by, uh, the town steward, there's a pump station, so that's taken care of. Any new buildings on the rest of the campus will likely be septic systems, it's currently served by septic systems. Uh, it's currently served by an adequate water system, so we'll be extending water through the camp as part of the project. And of course, we'll be incorporating stormwater management for any, uh, improvements, uh, that we're proposing to meet DEC regulations, as, as well as the county, uh, Drainage Agency's, uh, requirements. So in a nutshell, that's-
Okay, so the question I have for you before we get started is-
Sure.
What has changed since the last time you were here in 2013? Why are you coming back to us?
I think, Mr. Brenner, can we just stick to that?
Mrs. Slavin has asked that question.
Okay, I think you wanted to explain what the changes were from the comprehensive in 2013 to now. What, what are the difference, the improvements? 2013 and now.
Uh, I wasn't here in 2013.
Well- What's that?
They built sheds without permits, which they've already been issued violations for.
So is that why they're here, because they were issued violations?
Yeah, my understanding, and the, the-
Absolutely.
... is that, in order for them to do any work on the site, they had to come back, number one, for master plan approval-
Right.
... which was never obtained back in 2013.
So all they came for the last time was preliminary, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And-
You, you can speak when you're, I'll ask you, go ahead. Say it again, I'm sorry, Jane.
No, I'm sorry. Look, the drawings that they provided last time were limited in detail, and also showed different, this has different structures proposed-
Okay.
... that are in the 300-foot buffer. Um, so it, it is different from the original master plan, and my understanding from reading through all the documentation is that they have to have a master plan approved before they can start phasing the projects. The idea is that these projects are gonna be done over a long period of time, and originally you just proposed that it would be phased, but what are those phases? You need them clearly defined. Proposed length of time for those phases, obviously that needs to be flexible, but they give some type of idea to the town, how long this is going to take to substantiate all of these improvements, and there's quite a lot, and encompasses the whole site. And the drainage is an issue, as you can see from the, the line.
Okay, if you take a look at your decision in 2013, the, the program was supposed to get preliminary approval with the condition that we come back for planning board review of the improvements to be made. There is no way that we can finish a master plan for the whole things because of changes. This is a program that may take 10 years, 15 years, they're coming in on cycles as they do it. So the condition that this board created was that we were gonna get preliminary approval for a master plan, and then come back for every section of improvement that we're gonna put in. That is what we're doing. However, when we came back, we were told, since you changed the preliminary approval master plan, we have to update that preliminary approval. So that's why we're here for the preliminary approval of that master plan.
Well, I mean, you're, you're acting like you're upset, but that's the way it works. You didn't-
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not upset.
You changed, you changed the, the preliminary master plan that we, we spent an inordinate amount of time with you doing this, okay? And we had listened to the neighbors, and we came up with suggestions, and everybody was okay, and now I hear that you're changing what you-
We're, we're updating it, that's correct. We are updating the master plan.
Okay, and then can somebody explain to me about the building of the sheds without approval, what that's all about?
Okay, that's not exactly the fact pattern. The fact pattern is those sheds were put in for storage, we have a building permit, we have a C of O for those sheds. The problem involved with the sheds is that it was used for other usage, and therefore we had to go back to the Building Department to get an application for other usage. Every one of those sheds have a C of O.
Okay, but for something else? They have a C of O for something else, so you were violation for using something else?
For storage, and it was used for something else, they discontinued the use for that something else, and they have an application active with the Building Department right now for that other use.
Go ahead.
There is a building permit application in to try to rectify the use of those sheds, which there were multiple violations that we should, because they were being used for human occupancy and not for storage. So we're working on clarifying that, and that was part of the discussion at PRC last week, was that I requested that all of the buildings be clearly delineated on the master plan, and the existing plan, which I don't know if Troy brought that up. Um, the existing survey, condition survey actually had the new buildings shown, so I asked for an existing survey of what is there now with the uses delineated, so that in the Building Department-
The, okay, I'm sorry.
... figure out what's legal and what's not legal.
All right, fine, so what the uses are right now, whether or not they're, they're in violation or not, we wanna know what they're doing.
Right. So then you'd have that plan, then you would show your next is your proposed plan. What buildings are coming down, what are existing, what are being renovated, what are proposed, and again, there's multiple structures that are proposed within the 300-foot buffer.
And you did not get that?
Now, these two plans that Troy is showing you, uh, we received in the office today. These, and, and these comments were made last Wednesday at PRC.
Okay.
He's, he's begun the process of developing those plans at my request.
Okay.
Do I ask him now?
Yes, when you get a chance, I will, I'm gonna do this the right way, I promise.
Okay.
Okay, right? No, I don't mean to be rude, I'm not trying to be rude, I'm just trying to keep it so that we go with the flow, okay? Like we've been doing for the last 13 years. Okay. Is that it?
Pretty much.
I just wanna warn everybody that as soon as I'm done with listening to everybody's comments, and before I hear the comments from the, uh, audience, I'm gonna gavel to executive session, because I have some questions for the attorney, and I will not take a lot of time, but, uh, I'm just letting you know right now that that's what's gonna happen. So Rob, get ready, okay? Okay, good, thank you. Okay, unless you guys wanna go first, and then it's up to you. All right, Mr. Young, go right ahead.
I, I had questions regarding the use until I saw Mrs. Slavin's letter this evening. What is, what she's asking for is completely fair, and-
I agree.
-I would do the same thing.
I agree.
So I, I can't move forward with this until I get my hands around what you, what you have there now, what you're trying to do in order to help you guys out. Uh, that's all I had right now from Mr. Chairman.
Uh, I couldn't agree more, Mr. Young. Mr. Dell?
Yes, obviously the drainage could change quite a few things, when we eventually get to see that. The sheds are questionable, it seems obvious, and I can understand it, that the engineer himself is not totally familiar with everything that has happened here. Uh, my questions are now, is, are you still proposing to have the same amount of campers in this, uh, day visitors that you did before, or has that changed?
No, 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 no. He's gonna answer his questions, we're gonna go through it, and then you can answer all the questions at the end.
The board member asked me a question.
Right, isn't that what we usually do?
No, what?
No, no, no. Go ahead.
Uh, there will be no increase in the, the, um, the amount of children that are being, uh, serviced right now, and will be serviced.
So that means no more buses, too? The, the amount of buses that are-
There will not be an increase.
Okay.
You're gonna have buses because, but you will not have an increase.
I know that there's buses, I'm just asking if there's gonna be an increase in buses.
There will not be.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dell, sorry, go ahead.
That's basically, that's, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I was leading into exactly what the chairman had just mentioned, about the number of buses and et cetera, we had quite a few, uh, concerns about that. Right now, I regard this, uh, process as being, I've had no time to review it, um, obviously plans have come in, I think Ms. Slavin's, uh, request for clarity is spot-on, it's exactly what our request, and I think the other board members would regret it. So I don't really see how much we could go on this, any, any further than we have, because A, we don't have the facts, B, I don't know if you guys are familiar with exactly where things are, and until that happens, I think it's, uh, premature for anything, other than basically having this as another de facto consultation. That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Mr. Bond?
Uh, my concern is, you know, what, what's the proposed uses that you're, wanna do within the buffer? What are you looking to build within the buffer? Is that where those, is that where those fields are within the buffer, or?
Sure. There's actually proposed buildings-
Buildings.
... in the buffer, and fields, which are still considered structures within the buffer.
Right, yeah.
We all need to be looked at individually as to the impact.
Okay.
Troy, can you describe?
Sure, this, this green dash is the 300-foot buffer.
Okay.
So you can see, obviously, there's existing, uh, facilities, buildings, fields, parking lots in the buffer. So in these cases, we're replacing the older shelters with these new home base pavilions. Um, we do have a proposed baseball field, um, and, uh, improved existing field, and we have other various improvements, some do go-
And where, where are the residents on, on that map?
Uh, Second Town Road is up here, uh, so you have residents along here, this is the main entrance into the camp.
Okay, and where's McKinley and?
McKinley is up in this area here.
Okay, so that's where you're proposing to do the fields, that's up there?
Right, we have one new baseball field, and basically, uh, a formalized playfield that's already there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where that's gonna fly within the buffer, I don't, I don't know, just my, my opinion.
Enter, what's the building proposed by the entry there, the red?
This is the new camp services building.
That's also in the buffer, adjacent to the residential.
Right, that's where the, I forget the name of that other street that comes all the way down.
Briarwood Lane.
Right, right, okay, okay, that's the new street, but there's a street off McKinley, McKinley dead ends into-
Okay, the, Duane.
That comes down, I know it goes back into the campground there.
Duane.
Yeah, my dear.
Yeah, McKinley has the, the story that comes into the campground.
All right, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bond, Mr. Warren.
I, I think we're missing a lot of information that we really need. Drainage, usage, um-
Before and after.
Yeah, before and after, and, uh, that's my concern right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warren, Mr. Sweeney?
Besides the concerns expressed, which I agree with, I'm still stuck on this Rockland
Right, right. Okay, that's the new street. But there's a street off McKinley, McKinley that ends into-
Duane.
That comes down. I know it goes back into the campground there.
Duane.
Yeah, might be.
Yeah, McKinley has the story that comes into the campground.
All right, okay. Thank you, Mr. Bond. Ms. Warren?
I think we're missing a lot of information that we really need. Drainage, usage of-
Before and after.
Yeah, before and after. And that's my concern right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Sweeney?
Besides the concerns expressed, which I agree with, I'm still stuck on this Rockland County Drainage Agency memo about the existing violations on the buildings and the contravention of the Rockland County Stream Control Act. And they basically, I can't say directed, but requested of us that any future uses that come before us not get any approvals until the violations are been evaded. I kind of defer to that.
I spoke to the agency. What happened there is that they got a new survey. On the survey, what it did, it said the differences to what was, the survey was shown now and this new survey, and it was labeled "new," okay? And when I spoke to the drainage agency, the only thing we may have to do is give them three new applications for this so-called "new" situation. In other words, we did not violate their drainage requirements. They may require a formal application for what was shown on the survey as "new." That was the, and I will get a retraction later on that once I straighten that out.
Well, that's, you're going to have to bring it back to us and show us-
Yes, I will.
You just say the drawings show that there's 12 new sheds and other things are required permits before they can be done, but they've already been done. So, they need to clarify that.
That's what I'm going to clarify. And when I spoke to them, they said it's more like application being put in. They didn't have the applications.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Mandell?
Yes, just the, just what Director Slavin, not her thing, the number 21 items, A through I, the sheds, the purpose of the buildings, what are they going to be used for exactly? Which buildings are new? Which are going to be demolished? The regular work with it. That's what I brought up before and what the prior speakers have brought up. But that's about, nothing additional. I think that would answer. And the plan that we all have, it consolidates everything that we can look at too, besides the one that was brought in today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell.
I just got one more. This is like over four years now since we've seen this thing last Friday.
Yep.
So, I mean, what's happened in four years? I understand you don't have the funding.
We didn't have it, yeah.
But, you know, we could have done a lot of this in the interim. And now, it seems like we're rushing the project to so you guys can meet a deadline, you know?
The problem is-
You know, it doesn't make, it doesn't make a lot of sense. You've got four years, you did nothing. And now, you're back here-
Oh, they did stuff. They didn't have the funding. They have the funding now.
Yeah, but that has nothing to do with the approval process, the funding.
Well, we, after we got approval of the master plan, that would then have to be implemented in particular sections. What happened is that one group was thinking of developing one area where the, where we're working on it right in the 92nd Street Y was going to develop it. We did plan drawings to do that and then they turned out and they said, no, they bought a camp out in Ramapo, so they have a completely different operation. So, that's why this did not come to this campground or this area, okay? Implementation required funding. They have the funding. The reason it's starting to move now is that they're looking to start construction after next year's summer session. In other words, they're looking to get construction started on September 1st, 2018 because they do have the funding.
Well, that all depends on how cooperative everybody is. Okay, I'm going to read the comments and then I'll decide what we're going to do about-
I don't think you need executive session.
No, I don't think so either. That's exactly my point.
Well, we're going to ask for continuation.
Okay, that's good. So, then let me read the comments and then I'll explain to the audience what's going to happen. PRC has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted by other agencies. From Jane Slavin, Office of Buildings, Zoning and Planning, she has eight. Again, all of these comments are available to the public in the back. And at the end of the night, if you stay, you can have mine. Bruce Peters has two. The one that I want everybody to pay really close attention to is Michael Bettman's because this is going to have a lot, he's going to have a lot to say of what you're doing up there. And right now, he has two, which pretty much mimic everything that we've all been saying. Rockland County Department of Planning has nine. Rockland County Health has one. Now, this is for the amendment to the master plan. This is PB number 17-58. I'm going to read the comments for 59 because you're here and we'll get to that after as well. So, Bruce Peters has three. Booker Engineering has six, but there's no drainage approved, which we said from the beginning. Planning has 15. What Mr. Sweeney had alluded to from the Rockland County Drainage about the violation and all of the data that goes along with that. There's also a subletter from Tat Shajan from Drainage that it's, will in their purview. Another letter dated May 27th and June 26th. This is from, this is the old stuff from 2013. Then Department of Health from November 7, 2017, has one condition. Rockland County Sewer, none. Michael Bettman's same comments from the previous. And then, notes from the Orange Town Zoning Board of Appeals and the Rockland County Department of Health not objecting to this board serving as lead agency. Okay. So, I'm going to do what I'm going to do, yeah. All right, so basically, what's going to happen tonight is we're not voting on this. They don't have, you heard what we said here, but they also don't have drainage. And we don't move anywhere unless we have drainage, along with a lot of other data that they're missing. In the past, once that happens, I've usually not let the public speak because it's kind of, you know, you can come back and do the same thing all over again. However, in instances such as this, I think it's best that they hear what you have to say and that way, when they do come back, they could take some of that into consideration when we're doing the plans. So, again, this is just to be fair with everybody and to keep things going. There's another application after this. We limit everybody's comments to three minutes. You get one shot. There's no coming back and then saying it again, especially with the amount of people that are here. Sometimes I bend the rules because I'm the chairman and I'm allowed. But for most part, I'm just going to limit you guys to three minutes, but we do want to hear what you have to say. And I will tell you this, they're going to have to come back again, so you'll get a chance to say whatever you want to say again. So, who wants to be first? Okay, so the rule is you come up, you say your name and your address for the record. You do your three minutes. Please don't tell, don't run over to three minutes because again, I'm not here to play school principal, but we're, I'm going to tell, I'm going to gavel you out. You're done, next person, okay?
I'm only going to do two minutes.
Okay, that's great.
My name is Cliff-
Oh, yeah, and there's no, can I have his two minutes since I only use one minute? That's not the way it works.
My name is Cliff Shannon. I live at 537 Blovelt Road.
Great. I'm sorry, what was the number again?
537. I live on the corner of McKinley Street where all the buses come in. You answered two of my questions. There'll be no more increase. There'll be no increase in the number of campers and no increase in the number of buses, which is great. Two questions. Is it going to continue to be a daily camp, not a sleepover camp? That's one of my questions. The other question is, I looked at the map and you're going to increase two of the gravel parking areas. Was wondering if that's going to cut down on the bus traffic on the parking lot to McKinley Street because also, like I said, they're going to do new basketball field. Basically, the buses park on the basketball field. So, if they increase the gravel parking lot, will it cut down on the buses going down McKinley Street? They come out of there in a caravan. They don't seem to want a car between them. And when they come out on the Blovelt Road, it's brutal because they don't stop. They keep right on going. They cut across my corner coming in and I keep repairing it. I can live with that. But I'm just afraid of the traffic coming down Blovelt Road. They have to be told that they've got to let somebody down. They can't, you know, be 10 feet apart coming out of McKinley Street. That's kind of a dangerous condition. I'm under two minutes. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Kevin McCormack, 83 Sickletown Road in Orangeburg.
What was his name?
MCC, O-R-M-A-C-K.
I'm sorry, what's the number?
83 Sickletown. My wife Patty and I have lived in our house for about 10 years now. We'd like to speak about our concerns with drainage and water runoff from the campground. We've spoken to you guys many times before. We actually brought a letter today that we'd like placed into the record that documents a lot of the flooding that's happened to our house and our neighbors' houses over the last probably 10 to 15 years. And we want to say upfront that we applaud and are very happy that the campground wants to invest in the facility and improve it and continue to keep it as a campground. We like that. We have, we don't have a lot of issues with that. Our neighbors and as well as us have experienced flooding numerous times of our houses, our properties and pools over the last many years. And drainage must be a part of the master plan. So, thank you very much for listening and thank you guys for serving on the board. We know you have a very thankless job, so.
Thank you. Thank, yeah. And also, can we make sure that Jane gets a copy of that too, so she can look at it? Thank you. Okay, next, please. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Sonia Mason. 106 Duham. So, I know that this is a day camp, but I thought I should ask just for insurance. The proposed baseball field that's within the buffer zone, is it going to involve new tree clearing, maybe quite a lot of it? And are there any future plans to turn it into a night court at all?
I'm sorry, you have to really speak up. I can hardly hear you.
Sorry, are there any plans to use it at night and have it floodlit?
They're going to light it down.
Baseball field at night?
Okay.
Yeah, at all, in the future.
Well, that should be part of the master plan if it is, so we can look at it.
Okay.
Right, Jane?
Well, and if they did do it in the future, they'd have to come back for that. I guess we could take care of it. Be better if we took care of it right now.
Yeah.
And anything that's in the transit for buffer would also have to be reviewed.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next.
My name is Natalie Nicodema. One Briarwood Lane. Briarwood Lane. So, my house is right on the corner of Sickletown and Briarwood. I am the other entrance. My backyard is the camp road. I only have concerns really that this expansion isn't going to make the camp run later hours. We've had the experience where they've opened the pool during the summer to the neighborhood. So, at dinnertime, when we're having barbecue in the backyard, we've got hundreds of cars going up and down the camp road between 6:00 and 8:00 o'clock at night. I've lived there 25 years and for many years, it was a day camp only in the summer. And things expanded and the camp started to be open on weekends and all year round. So, my concerns are, are the baseball fields going to be used for other than the campers during the day? And why are they putting in more pools? Are they going to be using the pools for other purposes? And we too have experienced the drainage and water issues too on our property. There's a lot of water that runs out of the back of the camp and will often run through my neighbors' properties and into mine when there's heavy rain. We've spoken to the camp over the years about it. So, the drainage is an issue. That's it.
Thank, thank you.
What's that? Oh.
Okay, so there's not going to be any back and forth between the, you guys could just go outside and talk?
There was one other thing that I forgot.
Oh, there you go. See, going into somebody else's minutes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
About three years ago, without my knowledge, they put a new water line for new fire hydrant up the camp road. And they put up these water hydrant meters at the base of the camp road, which is right on my property line. And they covered it up with this metal box that is about 10 feet tall and wide and it's right on my property line. And nobody said a word about it to me. It was kind of lousy.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, Don Derisi, 555, that's D-E-R-I-S-I.
D-E-R-I-S-I and 555.
Blovelt Road. My wife and I lived there 10 years, adjacent to the campground. And some simple questions I'd like to see in the plan. I looked at the zoning file last week. I see there's an amphitheater plan and I couldn't find any detail. That could be a huge structure or a really insignificant structure, so I'd like to see that detail. I'd also like to see with the list of improvements, where they map into the different phases that you spoke of, four phases. When you said there's no drainage, I'm not familiar with the semantics. Does that mean there's no drainage plan? Obviously, the drainage-
There's no approved drainage plan.
So, we're referring to the plan. And then last, hours of operation, is there, especially with the ball field, is there weekend use planned? Is there nighttime use? And overall, it's a, as the other person spoke, it's pleasurable, it's pleasant to know that there's camp activity, the singing and whatnot is an enhancement to the environment, I would say. And just preserving, you know, that boundary would be terrific in terms of hours of operation and the type of activity.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, I'm a newbie. My name is Kelly and it's Deshaun, D-E-S-H-A-U, M is in Mary. I'm on 37 McKinley and I have been there one year. Woo-hoo, new homeowner. So, here's my question, guys.
To us?
To us, sorry, sorry. To you. I understand improvement and enhancement. So, are we, I guess the question is, what we have, are you trying to improve? Are you trying to demolish and start over? Are you adding more and taking away trees and the nature? Which I thought, I understood the reason the kids come to the camp is for nature. So, if we're making it Miralago, that doesn't make sense.
Come on.
Okay. So, my concern is, in building this improvement enhancement, what is the route that you're going to do it? Are you going to be coming up and down McKinley Street with the trucks and the gravel and the saws and all that good stuff? So, that's my question. My concern. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it?
Hi, my name is Michael Shine.
Okay, can I just ask you something?
Sure.
I don't know what that nice lady did to speak into the microphone so we could all hear you, but that's what you need to do because we can hardly hear you up here. So, if you could just get a little closer to the mic.
Sure. Mike Shine.
There you go.
601 Blovelt Road.
Thank you.
My question is with the drainage, is this going to be modification of the stream? Because the buffer zone, I've lived there since 2000 and several times where those proposed buildings and ball fields are, have been completely underwater. The water comes cascading over the dam and just wipes out the entire area down there and has, every time you have real heavy rain, big storms. That would be my main concern. I also question, we love the campgrounds, it's beautiful, but you know, you're adding another pool area. You're not really saying you're adding any campers, but there's a lot of stuff going in there. For why? Why if you're not adding more campers? I don't understand. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Shine. I live at 601 Blovelt Road and we've lived there-[1727.73]
Spell your last name.
Oh, S-H-I-N-E. We've lived there for about sixteen years, and I just want to say the campground, they're great neighbors. We enjoy living there. Nice hearing, it's nice having the hundred and five acres used in that way for the benefit of kids. It can be used in a lot of different ways. It can be overdeveloped and things like that. So I would just like to see the town and everyone work cooperatively with the campground to improve it and keep its current use.
Thank you. I think that's what we're all trying to do, even if Mr. Brenner doesn't agree with me.
You started.
Anybody else? Okay, so like I said, in this case, I don't close the public portion because we're not really doing anything. So you are going to get notified when they come back. There is a lot of work that has to be done. So, Mr. Brenner, you can ask for continuation for this, and then you'll ask for continuation for the site plan as well, and then we can move forward.
I am asking for that continuation, but I just want everybody to know it is staying as a day camp and only a day camp.
Okay. So when you come back, can you just let everybody know what the hours of operation are, and if you're doing weekends and things like that? I think that they have a right to know that as well.
Please understand, there were some operations in prior years which received town approval.
I know, okay, that's fine. We're not here to argue. We're here to be nice, okay? So let's try to be nice and-
If you just want me to clarify, in thirteen, when they came in for the master plan, they got preliminary because they were doing a bathhouse.
Right.
Then the board basically said, okay, on preliminary, go ahead and do your bathhouse, which is the renovation.
Of the bathhouse?
Right.
Right, I remember.
And so they did that, right. But as you say, nothing happened for four years, but they've been constructed.
Yes. So we're, again, we're not trying to dissuade you from doing the work that you want to do, and I think that the neighbors would be very happy to keep it as a campground. I think that's what I'm hearing. But on the same sense, it would, it's only fair that you follow the rules that we're asking you to follow. So, okay? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out.
Nice holiday.
You, too.
You, too. Thank you.
Okay, so everybody who has a conversation, we ask that you take it in the back room because we do have one more application, and that application is-
A lot of their water comes off the house.
HNA Training Center, they're here for final. PB number seventeen dash sixty.
Only because I didn't know what, you know, like, I was, my originally, I didn't see what you guys wanted to say. And I don't like to, like, you know, dissuade-
What's on next week?
I don't think it's much, right?
Hey Bruce, remember when they used to go to three in the morning?
Oh, yeah, we used to be a regular-
I was here. And that was because, God bless John Foo, may he rest in peace, but every single letter, dot, and period was read into the record. That was the first-
That was back when Tom Quinnlan was the chairman, too, that he used to go. When I first got on, we used to go to one o'clock every meeting.
Yes.
We had like twenty things on the agenda. I mean, it was like unbelievable.
Could be far less.
I mean, we used to have like twenty things on the agenda.
Okay, so, um, can you please state your names and your affiliation with the project for the record?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Garvey, members of the planning board. My name is Brian Quinn. I'm the attorney for the applicant, HNA Palisades Center.
And I'm Jesse Cokely, the engineer of record with the project as well.
Okay, Mr. Quinn, go ahead.
We were here July twenty-sixth of this year when we received preliminary approval and a negative declaration under SECR. There was a very minor variance that was required. It had to do with the setback because of the buffer zone. We had joined, if you recall, the Rockin' Country Club, which is zoned residential, even though there are no residences there right now. So we went to the ZBA. We were on the meeting of October the fourth, two thousand seventeen, and we were granted the variance. The next evening, we were before the Akebor Board, and they reviewed the landscape and the architectural renderings, and we were approved as presented. So we are now back before this board seeking final site plan approval.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, I'm zoned. I was thinking about something. I don't want to say it in public. If we were on TV, I would say it. The PRC has no additional comments. Building zoning and planning have no comments. Bruce Peters has six from December eleventh. I'm assuming that his December eighth is overridden, then?
No.
So then, okay, so Bruce's December eleventh supplements his December eighth, and he has seven there, which you have to work with him anyway to get final. Nothing from Highway. Rockin' County Planning has seven. Okay, so does Rockin' County Planning have a right to tell us where we're putting snow now? Is that a new thing? Because I have to tell you, I've never seen that before. So they have to come up with a plan for snow storage?
They're authorized through GML to review, but that's what they were using.
Do you have a snow plan?
What we typically do is designate an area beyond the parking lot where the snow just gets pushed to. It can be shown on the final plan.
Okay, so you have no problem with that?
Not at all.
Okay.
At Kane, they have a million dollar budget to take the snow offsite. Everything, there's not, no snow in the parking lot, no snow in the roads.
That's why tuition's so high.
No, it's the second lowest tuition in the state.
No, just tuition in general.
Okay, health says everything's been submitted. Okay, so here's a new one. Office of Fire and Emergency Services. Mr. Wren is now reviewing these plans. What are we doing here? So does he override Mr. Bettman, or is Mr. Bettman, what do we, I mean, we're talking about, why is Rockin' County Fire getting involved in something that Mr. Bettman should be? And you guys comment?
Well, the Spark Hill Fire Department also comments.
Well, they live in the district. I have no problem with that.
Right. But I think that he's doing it in coordination with it. I mean, they, they coordinate.
We don't have- Yeah, we don't have a problem with their comments, and I think they kind of-
You're making this too easy.
I don't recall ever seeing-
Nothing.
I've never seen it.
They've been having problems with the radio systems working within commercial structures.
Okay.
I actually had a meeting about it the other day. So they're, I think it's being returned to them so that they can make sure that the radios are working without, because the rescue workers are going in, and once they pass through the envelope of the building-
But this is not, has anything to do with the radio. This has to do with flow.
He does, he talks about it.
But he has flow in here about the sprinklers. Where the hydrant-
That's why when I didn't get that pumped in him, that's, I think that's the reason it's happening.
Yeah, point number four, comments on the radio. I don't recall ever seeing-
Yeah, but what happens if the radios don't work? Who's responsibility is it? The applicants or the fire departments?
They're making it a provision of the plants being approved now, that they're basically Wi-Fi transmitters-
Or transponders and-
Right. That'll pump up the signal once you enter the building.
Okay.
They literally, they can stand outside a window on the exterior, and it'll work. And they go inside the same window, and right on the other side, it's not working.
Okay, so Michael, okay, so this is from, that's you, Jesse?
That's me.
So I'm not worried about your letter. But Michael Bettman says that he has his comments that have to be looked at.
Mr. Garvey, we discussed at PRC with Mr. Bettman because we just got in that letter from the Palisades, Spark Hill Fire Department.
So are you okay, so you'll meet the Spark Hill letter, they have six comments?
Well, actually, Mr. Bettman said that, and he produced a memo which should be in your package there.
Which I read.
And when we met with him at PRC, he said, I don't need all of this. This is what I would like to have, and we agreed to all of those things.
Okay, so what we're saying is that Michael Bettman's oversee, overriding, or is actually our go-to instead of Spark Hill Palisades?
Yes.
Right? Michael Bettman is telling you what the code is, and if John Paulding is asking, you know, what their requirements would be like to be, but not necessarily the code?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to say that Michael Bettman is taking care of all of this, and that if there's issues, then they should talk to Michael Bettman?
And yes, we had no problem with his comments.
Correct. DEC has their letter. Just basic routine. And Brooker recommends with five comments. Cheryl, that's all I have. Okay. Keeping in mind, gentlemen, that this is final. I do want to state for the record, Mr. Quinn, I know that, I don't know of Mr. Mandell, I don't want to steal your thunder, but can you state about the Trip Advisor and how this, what we had asked about, that it was not going to be used as a hotel? Can you just state for the record what happened with that?
Yes. And I have spoken with Mr. Mandell, most recently at the PRC committee meeting, and then also once before about that. And when this was brought to our attention, and we advised our client that that was not within the parameters of what the special permit is, you know, that the rental of rooms at the conference center have to be related to conferences. They can't sell to individuals on a nightly basis. They understand that. When I first became aware of this, I went online and looked at a number of websites and saw that there were advertisements for that. I went online recently before my last discussion with Mr. Mandell, and I did not find any of those things there. And while I was waiting to be called this evening, on my phone, I also went on websites, Travelocity, Trip Advisor, Hotels.com, and there were no advertisements for the HNA Palisades Conference Center. So it's been shut down. They're operating within the parameters of my special, of the special permit that was granted.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
I have nothing. Mr. Cokely, thank you for that write-up. I wish all our engineers would do that. That's all I have, Mr. Chin.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Dell?
Yes. I think I would go without saying, but in addition to not having a daily rate, you certainly were not going to have an hourly rate, correct?
Okay. As you said, goes without saying.
That's correct.
We're going down, instead of going up, we just went all the way down.
I read a journalist article the other day that was in the paper. It was a good hint, whatever.
Just being careful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Mr. Bond?
No, I think it's a, I think it's a nice addition to the project, and it doesn't, to me, it doesn't impact anybody, so I don't have any issues with it at all.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Mr. Warren?
No, very pleased with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Sweeney?
No further comment.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Mandell?
Just a couple, yeah, I did, I went on the websites, too, today, and there's no single rooms being rented. It says for groups. I'll ask, I'll say something else, and I'll ask Mr. Magrino something. What's your, what is the final land disturbance? The DEC, in the document that they, they put forward, they talk about 1.15 acres of this disturbed property, and you're going to go with the eighteen-foot-wide access road rather than the twenty-five-foot access road?
Correct.
Are we going over the one acre, or are we less than one acre?
So, in the DEC's letter, that was issued, I think, even prior to the first planning board meeting or just shortly thereafter. That included the parking, which we're proposing to land bank. So if the parking was not constructed, we would be under the one acre. However, with the new request to put in the fire access road, it will trip over the one acre for disturbance, so a full sweep will have to be executed. We'll have to fill out the permit and file that as well with Bruce.
Okay.
And the plans will be updated to show that.
All right. And I think, Mr. Magrino, regarding what they can hold there? Can they hold weddings or?
Well, that's, Mr. Quinn, I think, brought that up, you know, the committed use. The L.O. District has a executive conference lecture center or facility, which includes overnight, a special permit used there, issued by the town board, permits the use of such conference facilities to cater to affairs of the general public. So presumably, you have a special permit.
Yes.
That permits it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. That's all. Thank you at this time. Okay, so that's good. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this? I don't see anybody and I don't hear anybody. Mr. Bond makes the motion to close. Mr. Warren seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I need a motion for final with conditions. Mr. Bond makes the motion. Mr. Peters has six on his first letter and seven on his second. Planning has seven. Okay, so what do I do about, what do I do about Wren's letter? Do I, do we make it as a part of the conditions? Is four?
I would make it because it's the coordination between them.
Okay. I want to know for, I just, but I'm saying this for the record, and you can chastise me if you want. We have no problems with the Rockin' County Fire people commenting on our applications. However, I am going to say that Mr. Bettman is our fire inspector, and he supersedes anything, as long as it's code-related, that anybody else. So it would be best if you coordinate with Mr. Bettman and one letter be submitted, or saying, Mr. Bettman can certainly say, I have spoken with Gordon Wren, I have spoken with the John Paulding Fire Department, and here's what we all agreed that we're going to say, and then go. That way, there's no hurt feelings, the plant, the Paulding Fire Department's not going to come in here and start telling us that, you know, we're not, we're not listening to them, whatever. Michael Bettman is our fire inspector. We've been listening to him since as long as I've been on this board, and we never, ever supersede what he says, ever. So I think that's a testament.
I mean, I think, just speaking, you won't necessarily see a conflict between all three of those.
I know, but it's just like, it doesn't seem like, the letter from Gordon Wren doesn't seem like he spoke to Michael Bettman and said, oh, or, you know, Michael, Gordon Wren seems like he's coming down here and looking at this stuff on his own, you know, and, you know, is that really?
Well, again, he's the coordinator for the county, and so he's permitted.
Good, well, good. And then I just want to make sure that if it's a condition that we make sure that my, I'll put it in there, that Michael Bettman reviews this and says he's okay with it. How about that?
Right, I think that makes sense, that might coordinate with.
Look at that. Thirteen years, I'm learning. All right. Michael Bettman does have his letter in here with his comment about the roads and the And then there's the letter from the DEC, and that's all I have. Cheryl? Is there a second? Mr. Sweeney seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What did Mr. Dell say? He's in favor?
He said good.
Mr. Dell said yes. Okay, so then, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a point.
Really? Wow, dude.
I just, I want to be clear, with respect to the county planning letter, they referred to the PIP and the DOT. Cheryl sent the stuff out.
That's fine. It's covered. You're covered. As long as Cheryl sent it out, we don't get a response. We've already covered it.
And I know Cheryl followed up again.
They put that in there, we, we're not, it's in there. It's right, it's form. So as long as Cheryl can prove, you know, show, then we're fine. And you're fine.
Good. I know, I always like to cover all the points.
It's fine.
Thank you.
And not excellent. If anybody gets that, Joe.
Other business?
Yes, we have other business. And that other business is-
Elizabeth Place.
Elizabeth Place, which is my old stomping ground. What happens here, Cheryl? What do they?
To referral to the village itself, no, I have.
Right.
I usually, they usually come in and they give them to Bruce Peters immediately, and just pass it back to the villagers. However, in the most recent one, they put that to Rockin' County Planning.[1761.83] Bruce Peters review wasn't sufficient enough for them, they wanted the board to review it, so you're getting it first.
Okay, we reviewed it. Did Bruce review it?
No, not yet.
Okay, so we'll give it to Bruce and let him review it.
And do you want to see it again?
No. How about that?
Can't question our guy.
Need a motion?
They're widening, widening the drive.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Widening the driveway, which we don't really, why isn't, right. Okay, so I need a motion for adjourn.
No, minutes.
I'm sorry, minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Bond makes the motion, Mr. Sweeney, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion for adjourn. Mr. Warren's first, Mr. Bond's seconds, all in favor? Aye.
See you next week.
And we'll be here next week.
What do we got on the agenda next week? How many?
Four.